Let the Congress be in order. John, would you deliver the invocation, please?
Dear Lord, thank you for all blessings you've bestowed upon us. Please help us make good decisions that benefit the city of Jasper. We will have troops overseas to protect them and help this council make good decisions. In your name we pray.
Thank you. Jim Looney, what's your prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council has a copy of the minutes, not minutes, I'm sorry, the agenda. And there's a couple of changes. If you looked at your new one, instead of the American Legion Post 149, they will not be with us this evening. We did insert J.Y.S.A. We want to make a presentation to them tonight. So it will be A, J.Y.S.A., B, Jackie Dunn, et cetera through E, I believe it stays the same. Would entertain a motion?
We would accept the agenda as in our intention.
Have a motion to accept?
Second.
Motion and a second, there's a tie. Absolute tie. Any discussion? Being in all favor, hold your hand. Thank you, counsel. Old business, we have none. Under new business, we have with us, I'm sorry, did I skip the minutes? Lisa. I absolutely forgot about you. I was trying to break the record tonight.
Ready?
Yes.
Monday, August 4th, 2014, regular council meeting. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonnie Waters to give the indication. Councilmember Allison Boyle led in the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item E under new business, approval of SLOSS bank account opening. Councilmember Ann Moore made a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item E, and councilmember Allison Boyle seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Boyle read the minutes of the July 7th, 2014, regular meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Councilmember Ann Moore seconded the motion. Council voted unanimously to adopt the minutes. There was no old business on the agenda. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood, planning his owning director, to present the Jasper Planning Commission report. Mr. Underwood stated that he was presenting a report for Tim Boily, chairman of the Planning Commission. Mr. Underwood stated that on June 17th, 2014, the Planning Commission heard requests for two parcels to be annexed into the city limits. Mr. Underwood informed the council that the Planning Commission had recommended to approve that the chapel church at map and parcel number 043B-071 of 1.88 cumulative acres located at 14 Carrying Way be annexed into the city as C-2 commercial property. Mr. Underwood stated that the property owners had completed all required advertising signage and public notices. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to annex map and parcel number 043B-071 into the city limits. Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mr. Underwood informed the council that the Planning Commission recommended to approve that map and parcel number JA15-0880.001 of 1.5 cumulative acres located at 20 Natalie Drive owned by Charles Maroni be annexed into the city as R1 residential property. Mr. Underwood stated that the property owner had completed all required advertising signage and public notices. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to annex map and parcel number JA15-08801 into the city limits. Councilmember Allison Boyle seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lisa Boyle to present to council for review and approval, one reduced rate application. Ms. Boyle stated that the applicant did not meet the income requirement, and the council had been sent a letter written by her family for review prior to this council meeting. Discussion by council followed. Councilmember Ann Moore made a motion not to approve the rate reduction. Councilmember Jim Looney seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item C, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized attorney Phil Landrum and landowner Adal Lawson to present two items for council approval in connection with the Hardees construction. Attorney Landrum informed council that the landowner wishes for the city to take Hazel Mosley Drive into its infrastructure as well as transfer ownership of the detention pond, including a 10-foot easement from the detention pond to Hazel Mosley Drive. Jim Looney made a motion to allow Mayor Weaver to complete negotiations to transfer Hazel Mosley Drive to the city of Jasper. Ann Moore seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Jim Looney made a motion to approve the transfer of the detention pond property as well as receive the 10-foot of property for the purpose of an easement to the city of Jasper. Ann Moore seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Item D, under new business, Mayor Weaver stated that the city had tried to contact Jackie Cox unsuccessfully regarding her council meeting presentation. Therefore, Mayor Weaver recognized Chief Steve Roper to explain to council what the presentation was about. Mr. Roper stated that Ms. Cox was asking the city to hold a boot drive fundraiser to raise money for heart monitor equipment for the ambulances. The equipment would allow the hospital to see heart monitor information gathered from the ambulance as a patient was being transported. No action was taken by council. Item A, under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Lisa Boyle to present to council approval of bank account opening for the SLOSS funds. Ms. Boyle stated that a separate bank account must be set up for the use of SLOSS funds only. Mayor Weaver explained to council that the county had contacted him regarding the SLOSS that began July 2003 and ended June 2014, and that the city would be receiving approximately $105,000 from these remaining funds. Mayor Weaver made the recommendation that an account be opened at Community Bank of Pickens County. Councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to approve the bank account opening. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried by unanimous vote. Economic developer Jerry Nectavall gave a report to council. Finance Director Lisa Boyle gave the financial report for the month of July 2014. Lonnie Waters gave the animal control report for the month of July 2014. Chief Greg Level gave a report of police activities for the month of July 2014. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of July 2014. Mayor Weaver informed council that two new mowers have been purchased during the month of July 2014. No action required by council. Being no other business to come before council, councilmember Jim Looney made a motion to adjourn. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular meeting on September 2nd, 2014.
Would entertain a motion?
I move we, I bend amendment, I move the minutes to read in the last paragraph of item E. I believe that's July 2008 rather than three. Six-year SLOSS, the date 2008, and I think you put three. Fourth line down, if my eyes are any closer.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other?
I move be amended and approved by council.
Second. Motion and second, discussion. Being in all favor, hold your hand. Thank you, counsel, as you know. It'll also be noted that Mr. Fountain, Councilman Fountain is not with us this evening on holiday. Now, we still have no old business. We have with us tonight J.Y.S.A. Finance.
Treasurer.
Finance Treasurer. And Secretary, Secretary in Treasury?
No.
Just Treasurer? That's better. Butch Roberts, Butch, if you would, come up, and we've got something for you. Lisa, do you have it? We had a golf tournament back in July, and the amount of funds that we were able to procure is $6,000 that we would like to donate, mayor and council, to J.Y.S.A. for the efforts that J.Y.S.A. board and all of its members do provide for the citizens of Jasper, or the students, excuse me, the children of Jasper and all of Pinnas County. So thank you very much. We'd like to have a little photo, will you? If you could get the council to... I was hesitant to bring this after, it's getting so warped. I didn't think it would bounce. Because it's bounced so many times.
It'll match.
Next item on your agenda is Jack Gunn Pharmacist's Award. Counsel, the other morning, Mr. Gunn from time to time stops by to inform me of things that need to be improved on in the city of Jasper. And during our conversation, the conversations are short and very rare. But anyway, Jack, while he was with me, I don't know if he intended to do it or whatever, but he was very proud that morning, and he informed me that he had been recipient of an award. And it was a national award. And I said, Jackie, I said, that's great. I said, we need to acknowledge your award, and not just because Jackie received an award, it's because of, I think probably everyone in here from time to time has probably used Jasper Drugstore. Probably, I can't give too much away, Jackie, because it'll probably ruin your life, because I'm gonna tell people that 12 o'clock at night, you probably, 1:30 in the morning, probably call Jackie and say, my child's running a fever, what should I do? And he'll probably spend some time talking with you, and then he's asking if you have a prescription, and then, I won't get too far in that, Jackie, but he'll help you make sure that you get through that evening, hopefully with minimal efforts. But that being said, Jackie, Jasper Drugstore, Jackie, you have been with a year, probably 99 is on your, on the thing. Jackie started this in 96, 97. Jackie doesn't do anything overnight. It takes several visits to the mayor's office and explaining what he wants to do, and, "Mayor, are you sure this is the right thing to do?" I said, Jackie, I've never been in the pharmaceutical business, but if I were you, I'd put a, I'd put a milk shop in. He didn't particularly like that idea, but you girls today have been making milkshakes. But I still think you'd go for Jack. But that being said, Jackie had many offers to, or possibilities to relocate the drugstore. And, but anyway, I kind of feels because he owned the land, or I've had him by the leg because he decided to stay on Main Street, and probably, I guess Ms. Moore, I'll get into the few businesses that were there at the beginning, but has been there for, how many years, Jackie?
Been downtown since 1952.
1952, that was a great year, by the way. But anyway, Jackie, I said, Jackie, give me a little bit of information about your award so that we can have the council recognize you at our regular meeting in September. And so Jackie gave me this. Now, Jackie gave me this, because my mind, Jackie's the only person I know that writes worse than I do. But Jackie, if I might scan over this briefly, take a little bit about Jackie, just not because he would show up at 1:30 in the morning, evidently he was a good student as well. Jackie was born and raised in Jasper, Georgia, which we all pretty well know since he's third generation. Our second generation, third generation is now, I'm gonna get into that in just a minute. Jackie was not only born in Jasper, he was also born at the Old Roper Hospital. But he went in the first building, were you born at the Old Roper Hospital?
No.
A city kid, he probably went to Canton. But anyway, back in the day, Jasper, Georgia, if you were here, you were the tape clinic. And other was Jasper, Georgia, at the Old Roper Hospital building downtown Jasper. He went to pharmacy school in Atlanta, Georgia, at the Southern School of Pharmacy, and is now called Mercer School of Pharmacy. While attending Mercer School of Pharmacy, he was given the Most Improved Pharmacist. Now Jackie, when you told me about that award, I thought, well, where did you come from?
I was afraid, when you're way down the bottom of the hole, you gotta go up.
You got more room to improve. And he was, he won that award his senior year, so evidently he came a long way from time to time. He was vice president of his senior class?
Yes.
A vice president of his senior class, I should've said senior, president.
Pharmacy school.
Of the pharmacy school. Graduated from pharmacy school in 1979, and he won the M.T. Anderson Award in 1986. Jackie, I want, you know, I can't do anything by myself, the council will tell you, I gotta have all kinds of help. Tell us a little bit about this.
The M.T. Anderson Award is, award is given out to the outstanding region president. And that year, I was ninth region president, and then, G.P.H.A. gave me an award for being outstanding president.
Jackie, when he was elected president of the state, currency, came by and told me then, it's not like it was just yesterday, but that was about seven years ago now?
It's now six years ago now.
Okay, you just finished?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you'd been finished with about a year. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay, this award is given to the outstanding president, the state president, in the state.
Well, actually, that, I was just nominated, actually, we had election, and I was nominated, elected for a five-year term of executive committee for G.P.H.A. That's what that was.
Tell the council, as you and I have conversations, a little bit more about that and what you guys do.
The Georgia Pharmaceutical Association oversees all the pharmacy organizations, or the leadership in the state of Georgia. And it's a five-year term. Once you get elected and you run for office, it's just like them running for political office, you run for office. And once you're elected, then you start at second vice president, go up to first vice president, president-elect, president, and then you're chairman of the board. And what we do is, we work with lobbying efforts down to Capitol, and we try to make sure everything's done correctly, and we try to keep all the pharmacists informed about what's going on in the state. So, little nutshell, that's what we do.
Well, that's a lot, because back in the day, I think you guys used to meet at downtown, in Canton, at the cafe, and I'd go down, probably try to do dinner, and there you guys were having meetings, it seemed like it was constant, but I didn't get to go very often. But I've run into you a few times there, and you were very involved locally as well as the state.
Yes, sir.
And that's what brings this award, is because of the job that he did for the state, he did, and the nation recognized that, and you got involved with the national. Tell a little bit about what goes on there.
Well, presently, I'm on a committee nationally with the compounding group, and, but while you're on the board or executive committee, you do a lot of internal relationships with the people nationally, and so you get to meet all the national presidents and so on and so forth. So, the last five years that I was president, or the last year or five years that I was on the executive committee, all the presidents came to our convention, and that's unheard of, they just don't usually do that. But I'm real good friends with people all over this United States. It was a pleasure to be president of the Georgia Pharmaceutical Association, and learn a lot about what's going on nationally as well as statewide.
Well, you're awfully involved, and the fact that you got this award proved it. But a little bit about Jackie, he's married to Terry Waddell?
Waddell.
Waddell? That's Jackie's right, and I, I'm too clear about it. From Louisville, Kentucky, for 35 years. It seemed like just yesterday you guys got married. He has two sons, Brent and Derek, and one of the few, I think you have three generations now in the pharmacy business, the best of the average pharmacists?
Yes, sir.
Does that make four?
There's actually six of us.
Okay, who are they, and tell us something about them?
Okay, of course, my wife, I met in pharmacy school, my father, who was, started the business, and then Brent just graduated, my son, he's in Louisville, Kentucky, doing a residency right now, and then I have a sister who has a son that is a pharmacist down in Douglasville, and his wife's a pharmacist. So we have six people in pharmacy right now.
Okay. Well, congratulations on your award, and congratulations on your successful story in Jasper, Georgia, and we're proud to have you on Main Street at the intersection of 53 and Main.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you all.
Thank you for acknowledging me, it's a great honor, and I'm looking forward to October when I receive the award, but it's, I'm overwhelmed, I just can't believe it.
Well, after they go on the line and they see this council meeting, they may cancel it. Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank y'all, counsel.
Yeah, we need a photo. Thank you. Where's my, I think you're, all your staff and your wife, we can do several photos. I don't have a $6,000 check. I'm starting my wife, can we get a check too?
I'll shut, I'm gonna take the money and run.
We don't have a, I'll be right here for counsel, man. Come on, Terry. Yes, ma'am, come on, ma'am. Let's do one like that, we're congratulating, and you don't mind?
Well, this is sporting cash right here, everybody.
Thank you. Item C, Sonny got a head start? We need a horn one time. Okay, everyone recalls Sonny had an accident, mustn't have to go, he's got a big deal out of it.
Jackie Dunn will get out at 1:00 in the morning.
Son?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm here tonight for Mr. Charles Robert Stoll, who has applied for a alcohol ice syrup beer in line at 600 Melissa Parkway. This is the old, left part of Kentucky Fried Chicken building. He is putting a restaurant on there called Buffalo Luke. It's a chicken wing establishment. I have his background check from the police department, said after conducting a criminal background check by frame of prints, it was found that there were no disqualifying factors to keep Charles Robert Stoll, Junior McQuarrie, an alcoholic beverage license on the background check. Also, Mr. Stoll's manager, John Rogers, had the same background check, and there's nothing against him either one. We're asking to continue the license process, electric signs, and things in the paper and things like that, and he has all that, and he's ready to do that. And so, we're asking tonight to get permission to continue his license process.
Motion to continue. A motion to continue?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Being in all favor, hold your hand. Thank you. Son, well, starting this part of this, getting back to your seat.
This gentleman also owns, just for your information, he owns Cheeseburger Bobby, he's the one in Canton.
Item D, 2014 SLOSS bank account. Counsel, it seemed like just yesterday we did one of these, I'll let Lisa explain.
Well, we have to have two open, because we have two SLOSS, have the 2008, 2014 SLOSS check we got the other day. And today, we received a check, our first SLOSS check from the county, $71,224 that we need to deposit in a separate SLOSS account. It has to be a separate general fund account, a fund account and a bank account. So, we need council approval to open a bank account, preferably at the same bank, Community Bank of Pickens County.
Would entertain a motion?
Make a motion for 2014 SLOSS bank account.
Motion and second, discussion. We'll take this moment, mention that, tell the council how much the check was, if you would, Lisa.
The county, the total collection for the month of July, according to the county, was $356,123.33. Our portion, our 20%, amounted to $71,224.67. And I have a copy of the check, if anybody else wants one.
And I wrote it. It's official, sir. Cash, thanks for that. Okay. Did we borrow that?
No.
Okay, all in favor, hold your hand. Thank you, counsel. Item E, Property Tax Exemptions Approval, Lisa?
Okay. The county called, a new house bill was passed this year, so they had to have a lot more, had to have a lot more documentation for the state. We need, council needs to approve the exemptions if they want to continue the property tax exemptions as we have done in the past. And those exemptions are the homestead exemption, the local, just city Jasper's $3,000, and homestead exemption if you're 65 or older, is $4,000. So if you still want to continue that.
That's what we've done for a long time. Would entertain a motion?
Make a motion to city extend the tax exemptions from prior years. You want to do a one-year extension just for fiscal year 2015 as well?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be for the 2014 bills that we may allow, but the revenue we've counted for the budget for 2015, so, actually 2014 property tax bill.
Property tax, bill in 2015. Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Being in all favor, hold your hand. Thank you, counsel. Being all the regular business, under mayor report, economic development report, Mr. Nectavall is out of town. I think this is a conference in Augusta. What is it, governor's economic development, tourism? Tourism, yeah, you're right. Financial report, Lisa?
In your package, you have a copy of the summary by the division financial report for the month of August. We are below budget for all departments, most departments, 59.9%. And we should be at about 66% as far as our annual budget and the general funding, we're at 59.9% there. We did collect a bigger sales tax this month, it would've been for July, collected in August, $91,523, which $13,000 over our prior year's collection, at the same time last year of month's collection. We talked about the SLOSS. That's about, look at the water, find it, we're at about 64% there, compared to 66.26% that we should be at this time this year.
Okay, I know that she's sitting back in the back, and I hate to hit you with this and open council, that prepared, but we have talked about it, we have set plans to purchase a police car, what, next month?
Yes, that was in the budget, we had two police cars in the budget.
So we're looking at one and possibly two, it depends on the flow. So these things will be happening. Anything else specific that you can recall? We got, jumping in the water really quick, we have finished, I wanted, one of my notes, I was gonna shoot the council email, but we have finished the water project with Liberty Lane. The expenses have run up with all the hydrants and the fittings and this, that, and the other, so I haven't got the final settlement yet with Global. Hope they're not watching this, it's gonna be a little more than we anticipated because there was swag in the survey, it wasn't straight shot like we had, and we anticipated it, but it's gonna be pretty close. When you talk about a thousand dollars for the water line, but the water line is already on, we're providing water to the south end of Jasper into the old four-inch line, and after we reverse the lines with a new tank, it's quite a, quite a treat to get the volume into that area with that line, so, but we'll give you a little update on that between now and next month, that'll be some information, like Sandy wants that, get that settled, and that should be a phone call tomorrow, get Global in to see if we can close that out. We have another project. see if we can close that out. We have another project that, the project that the council approved for Hawken Rock, across the, under the railroad tracks. Lonnie meeting with me this morning, the railroad approved the easement. So we'll probably move into that. We do not have a benefactor in that one that is coming out of our budget. And we have one for Lance Road, which will be working with Habitat for Humanity. And so that's gonna keep us really busy on waterlines, our waterline installation crew. But today it was fun to tell the crew to go out in front of City Hall and take the crabgrass out of the cracks between the technical college and, and the road and, and go down and do a little weed in at, at the local yard sale spot. So, so maybe it's looking pretty good. I haven't got a chance to look at it, but that's things that's gonna be hitting the budget between now and then. And of course, we'll be calling the, the budget committee together and get everything prepared for our meetings and have everything's moved out for the last quarter because we gotta start shutting down when it gets winter so that we can close up the year. And all these things will be coming as like it has in the previous year. With any other questions, council, to Lisa or myself?
At our work session, we discussed finance committee discussing the holiday pay situation. He wanted to, let's just have that at the same time we have our first budget meeting.
We, we run the numbers, over five thousand dollars. Basically what it costs over time eventually we have to bring in. So we'll discuss that if you want to.
We'll do that at the first budget meeting, which will probably be, what, October, I think?
Anything else? Thank you, Lisa. Lonnie? Or any permits that you wanna talk about? I think I stole your thunder.
Okay, as far as out of control, I've just had sixteen calls in the last month. You have a list of all those in front of you. And as far as any permits or anything, the only thing that you haven't touched on is the cleaning around the buildings that we did bring up. I have been in touch with the landlord across from that man. She authorized today to get it cleaned up. She's a hundred percent for it and that will be happening very soon. And then the place across from the Jasper Middle School, I have finally tracked down a lending institution in Indianapolis who is going to be in the, in the next few days about where that stands between them and the landlords. And then they plan on making the city aware of what, what they can do or what they cannot do. And other than that, the things that the mayor was discussing.
Any questions, council?
Is it bank or is it still?
It's, the bank is trying to decide exactly where they stand on this issue. There was some lack of communication between the bank and the previous owners. And the fact was they couldn't find the previous owners. But they are, you know, they're still around and they just hadn't made contact. Now they're making contact with them and they're gonna see what, what they're gonna do with the whole situation.
But in the meantime, we're cleaning it up and for our visitors coming this weekend and for our regular citizens as well. And it's been, been made clear by the police department that the yard sales there are violations of city ordinance and that's not gonna be allowed. We, it took us, us and Lonnie, a week and plus to find the owners. So I know no one else got permission to be on that property. So just without permit to be there to begin with, which we wouldn't allow if they had the permit. But anyway.
There's no other institution that told me that they're not gonna allow yard sales there. So I said not allow.
Thank you, Lonnie. Chief Roper?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. See, we have a police department with multiple officers responding to eight hundred and eighty calls, nine one one center, armed forty-three motor vehicle accidents. Issue total seventy-six citations, fifty-seven speeding one for seatbelt. One uninsured mother is thirteen. Other, Miss Landis traffic, suspended over road. George State Patrol issued sixty-seven citations for total hundred forty-three city courts. At twenty state warrants issued for following disorder conduct, Mr. Mayor, brief criminal trespass, Mr. Mayor. One theft by receiver, Mr. Mayor, one sex battery, Mr. Mayor, one child molestation felony, one sexual battery felony, one terrorist threat felony, one enticing a child for indecent purposes felony. Mr. Mayor theft, one party crime auto theft felony. Two warrants to do false name, Mr. Mayor, and two theft by technical auto felony. One driving on suspended license, Mr. Mayor. Two family violence battery, Mr. Mayor, and two theft by taking Miss Landis calls, made law calls, twenty-nine disorder like, twelve harassment, nine trespassing warrant, seventy-three suspicious activities, and forty-two United States investigation.
Questions, council? The police action as far as the unlawful use of the property for yard sale purposes? Any, any outcome on that over the weekend?
They, I did fish in them a copy of the ordinance and, you know, we discussed, we don't have any yard sale ordinance, but we've got plenty of tools in place for like peddling without permitting. We can also, we've got a sign ordinance here that we, they have to abide by. And there's one other that they, that they never showed up. So I don't know if the word traveled, but I had my guys watch it all weekend and no one ever came to us.
And you still have yard sales, you're home. We have a clamp down and trying to prevent the mainstay of Jasper, Georgia. It's, where are you going, Jasper, Georgia? Why yard sale? So it's, it's something we're not trying to stop and take people's rights away, but somebody who just wants to homestead on the side of the road for these purposes, our business stay at whichever is not gonna be allowed.
Oh, we have the other one that falls under technically the curbs. It's falling under that.
So it creates a little chaos as far as with traffic that that day and it, sometimes it's unsightly. But anyway, thank you, chief. And Lonnie, thank you for your efforts to get the truck stop properly cleaned.
We'll be on full forces with the yard sale.
Two.
Uh, yeah, let's talk about that before you sit down.
Play the water tank.
And have Lonnie and the other chief, who can come on up as well, over and join the party.
He's like, man.
Tell the council a little bit of what you foresee, when the events are gonna start and what's gonna happen to town, what's gonna happen to the county, how many people are coming? Since we call this a sheriff, police chief.
Another, it's sheriff's, Jeep fest. It's grown as it, than it was, gonna be bigger than it was last year. And it's gonna continue to grow if they keep doing that. And this year they elected to have a show and shine on Main Street. We're gonna close Main Street down. We're gonna have to maintain fifty-three as the state route. It will remain open around East and West. But basically from what George Weaver's all, was all the way down sixty-one Main. We just see the jeeps back to him. We got a space for one hundred and twenty.
And the sheriff department chief Dick, he said yesterday, I believe, they have cut the number down to a hundred and twenty for their show and shine entries, which means in theory, we shouldn't have five hundred each on Main Street with a hundred and twenty. In theory.
Theory.
But there's still some quirks being worked out about how to get the jeeps in there. And Doc, my assistant chief and the chief deputy are, there are still some issues on how they're gonna enter and what they, you know, we have our opinion, they have theirs. And we're gonna try to make a little work together.
And they're gonna try to come in on top of regular business hours on Main Street.
What do you expect them to start coming in on, for Main Street?
About fifteen minutes ago.
Well, I've seen a bunch. There's a bunch already in town. I'm just wondering about Main Street.
They'll just start seeing them doing it Thursday. They have some scheduled events, trail ride out the county through the night, Thursday night. And then a show and shine Friday and all weekend, trail rides. And then Sunday, I think there's a trail ride.
I mean, this, this event's becoming nationally recognized. It's what we know.
I see they got a thousand pre-registered.
Jeff, Jeff told me there's a Jeep club in California that's advertising on their website.
Was on this thing?
I thought motorcycle people were great.
Right. Jeep people apparently are crazy. We are.
But it'll work out fine. I got, like I said, I got a few extra guys coming in. Friday will be our biggest thing to do with it. Go up the weekend, they just, they gather up their, winged the property.
Big traffic.
They might, they just, all the traffic laws, it's not that big a deal. But Friday, Friday will be a little active. It'll bring some business to downtown. But we're gonna be closing Main Street. Y'all save us a bit of time up there.
Occasionally.
You should bring some business, all of that news. Bring not only Pecos County, but out to Yerba County as well as Cherokee County, look for people, look for lights and stuff.
Not only that, and all the hotels in the surrounding areas are full already too.
Thank you, chief.
We'll get through it.
Thank you. Chief Roper?
Mayor and council, there were eighty-seven murders responsible with fire department in August. Those were no structure fires inside or out, no vehicle fires inside or outside the city, and bright fires in and out. Twelve wanted defences with injuries inside, two outside, thirty-nine murder medical responses inside, three outside, nine other caused in, five out. At the end of the month, eight hundred sixty-three total fire inspections looked at, two sets of plants for renovation and conducted ten inspections.
Questions? Thank you, chief. And we'll see you all weekend. All passes have been reviewed, revoked. Council knows business coming forward, then have a motion.
So much for your church.
Thank you, council.